Should be good to go.
No, no.
At this time, I call to order this public hearing of the Bonner County Hearing Examiner on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five at one thirty in the afternoon. We are located in the first floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, fifteen hundred Highway Two, Sandpoint, Idaho. We are streaming online via Zoom and YouTube. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance to see here participate in these proceedings? Okay, please take note of the hearing procedures on your screens. And I will be submitting my written decision within five business days of this hearing for each of these files. Okay, so this time I'd like to lead the room with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Any announcements? Any corrections to or changes to the July second hearing minutes? No? Okay, then I declare them approved. All right, so today we are going to start with file B zero zero one eight dash two five of variance property line setback. The applicant is requesting a zero foot property line setback where five feet is required for the purposes of reconstructing an existing deck. The one point zero five acre property is own recreation. The project site is located off Bayview Drive in section nine Township fifty nine North Range four west Boise Meridian. The property site is within the service area of the Coolin, Kavanaugh Bay Fire District and the Coolin Sewer District, and I have no conflict of interest to lawyers.
Kyle Snyder, Bonner County Planning Staff. And we're doing that property line setback for TDC Properties, file B zero zero one eight dash two five. Going over a quick project summary again, the applicant's requesting that zero foot property line setback or five feet is required for the purposes of reconstructing an existing deck. Property is located off Bayview Drive, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained road zoned recreation and is generally located in section ten Township fifty nine North Range four west Boise Meridian. On the right side, there is a site plan showing what that existing deck looks like. And then their proposal to cut it back to the property line. It's shown here. See some background on the site. There's a lot of colors on that right image. I'll explain that here. That is the slope light art. It's a greater breakdown, so you're seeing a lot more colors, but it's just breaking it up into those different categories and that that legend's off down to the right. The current land use, it is an existing hotel. Property is unplatted. And size is approximately one point zero five acres. Again, it's zoned recreation and the comp plan designation is resort community. Access to the site is provided by David Drive. It's a Bonner County owned and maintained public right of way. Some environmental features on the site, it does contain map slopes of zero to thirty percent or more that you can see on that that image to the right. Site does contain contain some mapped wetlands that are all the way up to the north of the property border and pre-slate right there. The site does contain some waterfrontage again all the way to the north. And the site contains SFHA zone A E and X. For the firm panel shown. But the proposed or the existing and proposed decks are all within zone X. Services to the site, water is provided by individual well. Sewage is coming from Coolin Sewer District. It is it is within the district of West Bonner County School District number eighty three. And then fire services provided by Coolin Kavanaugh Bay Fire District. The screen are the applicable standards of review that this file was reviewed against. Agency, so a full list of the agencies noticed where this file can be found in the attached annex A. Comments were submitted by the following agencies, Northern Lights, I L and Bonner County Historical Society. Following agencies replied with no comment, and that was D Q Fish and Game and Idaho Department of Transportation. At the time the staff report was written, no public comments were received. So your first first variance conditions, the described weather condition applied to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone. Vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances of the world where we see applicant has no control. Applicant response, this property includes the existing historic Northern Hotel, which was likely built prior to current property line setbacks. As a result, this leaves access between the building and the western property line at the minimum setback. Does not allow good access for multiple entrances and exits to the building in case of an evacuation or emergency without proper access. Existing building does have adequate egress locations on the western side and also has an existing deck in this area since nineteen ninety three or prior per record survey. These egress locations still need a safe route around the building for ADA access. Due to steep slopes on the western side, the rebuilt deck will ensure an adequate ADA route for exiting the vicinity. Staff response, according to G I S lidar data that we saw on a previous image, the subject property contains slopes ranging from zero to thirty plus percent. Property contains frontage on Preslate and is located in FEMA SFHA zones A X. Subject that is located within zone X, which does not require any floodplain development permitting. For the application, the deck was built to allow multiple access points to the structure to allow for ADA compliance. Second condition, explain how special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Rapid response. Yeah, get purchased the parcel with the existing building place where it currently stands within close proximity to the property line as described in the previous statement. Furthermore, steep slopes from the egress locations along the western property line make it challenging or impossible to provide a proper exterior emergency ADA access route without the aid of a rebuilt deck. A deck or decks has been present along the property line per record of survey dating back to nineteen ninety three. Staff response, the applicant obtained ownership of this property on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty by warranty deed instrument number nine five six one zero five. There is no evidence that the applicant has changed the size, shape, or topography of the property since obtaining the property. The record of survey was submitted with the application that appears to show an existing deck as of nineteen ninety three that was approximately one point five three feet over the property line. Twenty twenty one, a building violation was issued due to the construction of a deck without permits. Just file B V two thousand and twenty one dash zero one zero six. In March of twenty two, Bonner County Planning Department Compliance Investigator visited the site, issued stop work order. The second site visit was conducted in May of two thousand and twenty two where work was found to have been continued and a second stop work order was issued. The applicant applied for a building location permit in March of twenty two. File number B L P two thousand and twenty two zero three two two. That remains incomplete. And finally, explain how granting the variance is not in conflict with public interest and that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. Applicant response is the deck along the western property line is expected to have no negative effect on the adjacent undeveloped lot to the west of any of the surrounding parcels or any of the surrounding parcels. As mentioned above, the deck has existed since nineteen ninety three or prior. A rebuilt deck benefit the safety of the public slash visitors that join the site while providing ADA access in case of evacuation or emergency. Staff response, according to a comment from Idaho Department of Lands, I D L administers the adjacent endowment land affected by the proposed zero foot setback. Although the neighboring endowment parcel is currently vacant, it has been identified for future development. Please consider this decision as if planning for future residential or commercial infrastructure on the adjacent endowment parcel. A zero foot setback could pose safety risks and negatively impact the future development of this parcel. Setbacks for the existing deck and other encroachments should allow repair and maintenance access from the owner's parcel. No other comments from the public or any public agency or taxing district were received that stated that the proposed project would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or be materially injurious surrounding properties or improvements within the vicinity of this product. Finally, the staff analysis. So the property does contain some natural features that could make developing the subject property challenging, including map slopes, wetlands, frontage on Preslate and SFHA zone A E. However, the map slopes appear to be the only environmental feature on the property that would impact this project. And there is no evidence that the applicant has changed the size, shape, or topography of the property in any way that would require this variance. The applicant rebuilt and expanded an existing deck without a building location permit. A building violation was issued to the property as well as multiple stop work orders. The applicant has applied for a building location permit that will still need to be completed. Based on a comment from Idaho Department of Lands, there are potential safety risks and negative impacts to the Haverian parcel should be considered when evaluating experience. No other comments from the public or any public agencies were received indicating this variance is in conflict with public interest. Any questions?
No questions, thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to speak at this time? We're here for them. Are they online by any chance? Is that the applicant? You know?
Um, it's his sister.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for having us. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person today. Um.
Could you state your name for the record first, please?
Of course. My name is Marika Hoverhall.
Okay.
If you need me to. Do you need me to spell it? Sorry.
Oh, no, you got it. It's all good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for having this hearing today. Um. I I know I'm familiar with setbacks and variance and the due process, so um. I I just wanted to point out that the one suite on that, um. I think it's on the western side, the Kalispel Suite would be like is basically the main ADA suite for the hotel. Um, and so if it was to be pulled back five feet, it would really compromise accessibility. Um, my mother is disabled and it's in a wheelchair, and so that's really the suite that that she likes to use. And so I did notice in Dan Brown's comments, he said if it has demonstrated that certain areas of the current deck cannot meet ADA compliance, a zero foot variance for specific portions may be appropriate. So I guess I I just ask that that be taken into consideration as that portion of the hotel, since it's so old, was built quite close to the property line, you know, back in nineteen hundred and so that deck is really providing some really good access at that portion of that deck.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, just trying to, you know, work with I D L and to get this all resolved. Um, that the encroachment has been already pulled back, so it is actually at the um lot line now. So um that has been rectified. And then I guess I just had a question after this is done, how to proceed with um completing the permit? Is the permit hung up because of just this variance hearing or is that something on our end?
I'm gonna send that over to Kyle.
Uh, it is a big part of it. I'm not sure I I would have to review the B L P itself, but it definitely, this variance is one of the things that is.
Okay, so it does sound like obviously the variance is one of the things, but unclear at the moment if that's the only thing.
Okay, okay, thanks. I'll follow up with that. Okay.
Once the hearing is over with, you know, be sure just get a hold of the planning department and they can clear up any other issues you guys need to work through.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, thank you. Sorry, just writing. Okay. All righty, so I'm gonna go ahead. I think there isn't anyone else for the applicants. I'm gonna go ahead and read the rules of testimony. If you wish to testify, you will need to please state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person, so they have up to six minutes to speak, but no one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application only. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement. No need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will not be allowed either. Is there anyone that has a written statement they'd like to enter into the record?
I like this.
Yes. Okay. Any supporting public testimony in person or online? Is there anybody online? Okay. Any neutral testimony in person on this file? Any opposing public testimony in person? Anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak that would like to enter any comments into the record? All right. Okay, so then I'm gonna close this uh file or this hearing to the public testimony for this file. And I'm going to render my decision within the five business days. So at this time, I'm gonna close file B zero zero one eight dash two five. And we are moving on to file B zero zero one six dash two five variance property line setback. The applicants are requesting a variance to the property line setback requirements to allow for a twelve foot setback where twenty five feet is required for an existing accessory structure. The ten acre property is own agricultural forest twenty. The project site is located off High Meadow Drive in section thirty Township fifty five North Range four four west Boise Meridian, and I have no conflict of interest with all of your states.
Right. Sorry.
No worries. I didn't catch up with this anyway. It's getting faster. I didn't make some.
Again, it's a street setback and bulk increase for Joseph and Chantel Brady. Project summary, the applicants are requesting a variance set property line setback requirements to allow for a twelve foot setback with twenty five feet is required for an existing accessory structure. Project site is located off High Meadow Drive, section thirty Township fifty five North Range four west Boise Meridian. And you can see the property there with the road. And those property lines are offset to the east a little bit. The road's a little closer to the center. Site plan showing the the structure in the southwest corner. Background on the parcel. Land use currently is residential, a single family dwelling, unplatted, ten acres zoning designation is agricultural forestry twenty and comp plan designation ag forest land ten to twenty. Access again off High Meadow Drive, a privately owned and maintained easement. Environmental factors include slopes of thirty percent plus map wetlands and frontage on Curtis Creek. And the site is within special flood hazard area zone X. Waters provided by individual well sewage by individual septic system is not within a fire district. Is served by Northern Lights and West Bonner School District number eighty three. The applicable standards listed. And agencies replying with a comment included Bonner County Planning Flood Plane Review. Agencies replying with no comment or Bonner County Historical Society, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Idaho Department of Fish and Game, and the Idaho Transportation Department. Describing whether conditions apply to a property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone vicinity. Which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control? The applicant responded. Excuse me, this is a heavily wooded area with low clearing. The site provides place for necessary structure accessible to us. The structure is already built with a misreading or the required setback. And it would be a huge burden to move or destroy. The structure is surrounded by unused land and does not impact road use or otherwise have a potentially a potential for negative impact. Staff response was this parcel is long and narrow, appearing to be nonconforming with the current depth to width standards, as well as being smaller than the zoning minimum. A ten acre parcel in a twenty acre zone, parcel is similar in size and shape to nearby properties. But unlike the adjacent properties, the subject parcel has High Meadow Drive winding lengthwise through it and Curtis Creek with associated wetlands dividing it. The building envelope south of the roadway and creek appears to be fairly small and limited by steep slopes except for a flattened area where the structures exist. It appears that other locations for a structure would be more difficult for development or far from the residential structure. Explaining how special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, the applicant responded. As stated above, the structure is built with a misunderstanding of the required setbacks, which is fully our fault. As the structure stands, there's little impact on the surrounding environment that could be caused by its existence. Staff responded, the parcel has been the current configuration since at least nineteen ninety three. As evidenced by warranty deed four one eight zero three six, the applicants purchased the parcel in two thousand and sixteen under instrument number eight nine six five four eight. The applicants did not choose the location of High Meadow Drive. Nor do they have control over the location of Curtis Creek or the slopes affecting their property. While they admit that the structure's location resulted from their actions, it does not appear they have taken any actions that created the circumstances that led to the location chosen. And explaining how granting the variance is not in conflict with public interest and that will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. The applicants responded, we are in a heavily wooded area with no public service. There is little traffic, no sewage or water attached to the structure. Does not impede any others' access or usage of surrounding areas. With staff response, for the applicant's site plan, the structure does not conform to the setback from High Meadow Drive. Or I'm sorry, the structure does conform to the setback from High Meadow Drive and does not appear to affect the public or community in any way. It appears the structure may not be visible to public view. Private land that borders the subject property is developed at the opposite end of the parcel, the steep slopes and wetlands near the project site. The applicants have a buffer of timber and vegetation between the structure and the neighboring parcel as well. Does not appear that there is any conflict with public interest and that will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject person. Uh, at the time, the staff report was written, no public comments have been received. And staff analysis, the proposed variant seeks to allow an existing setback to remain where the building envelope appears to be limited by slopes, roadways, wetlands, and a creek. The applicants did not create the parcel or the environmental factors limiting the building envelope and wished to have the accessory structure near their residence. There does not appear to be any effect on the public or community. Does not appear to be in conflict with public interest and that will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject purse. And final picture shows the slopes, the creek, the road, the wetlands, and the lawyer.
Any questions?
Right. Thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to presentation at this time?
Like most of, um, it's been covered there. As far as, um, it is only one corner that is limited to the twelve. The other corner doesn't fall fully within the twenty five feet either. Um, but just the way it sits diagonally, um, and it is just an open loft for all of our animals feed, and it's the one place where you can actually get access to build and take out and all of those good things. So.
Can you just quickly state your name for the record?
It's Chantel Brady. Okay, thank you.
That helps. Okay, well, I'm not going to go ahead and reread those rules of testimony since I went through them already. Um, is there anyone that has a written statement they would like to enter into the record? Any supporting public testimony in person or online? Is there anybody online?
No one answered online.
Any neutral test, public testimony in person? Any opposing public testimony in person? Anyone in the audience who did not sign up and would like to enter any comments into the record? Okay, so thankfully you have nothing to rebut. I always like that. Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony and as with the other file, I'm going to render my decision within the five business days. So at this time, I'm gonna close file B zero zero one six dash two five. And we are going to move on to file B zero zero one five dash two five of variance bulk increase. The applicant is requesting a bulk increase of sixty seven percent for a single family dwelling and a thirty seven percent increase to an accessory dwelling unit. The zero point three nine seven acre and zero point three acre property is zoned rural ten. The project is located off Bottle Day Road in section three Township fifty seven North Range one west Boise Meridian. Property site is within the area of the Segal Fire District, and I have no conflict of interest, so it is all yours. Property site is within the area of the Sagu Fire District and I have no concept of interest, so it is all yours.
Good afternoon, hearing examiner, Dan Brad planning staff for the record. We have discussed the zero zero one five dash two five bulk increase. These are the applicable standards for which this files were reviewed against. The applicant is requesting to increase the bulk of an existing single family dwelling by seven thousand one hundred fifty nine cubic feet or sixty per sixty seven percent. For a second story addition to an existing dwelling. In addition to their request, applicant also requesting the increase of set or six hundred seventy ones cubic feet. From thirty seven percent for new roof design for an accessory dwelling unit, shed, snow, and protect the entrance. No request has been made for setback standards. Project is located on Bottle Bay Road in Sabo. Background on this uh on these two parcels, they are both residential. They're unplanted parcels um. Smaller one is point zero three acres in size and larger one is point. Are zero point three nine acres, they're currently zoned rural ten and have land use designation of rural residential. Access is Bottle Bay Road, you've got Bonner County owned, maintain public right of way. So some environmental features that are found on this parcel does contain map slopes being zero and thirty percent or greater. Site does contain map wetlands, site does contain. Uh frontage on Lake Pontaray is within special flood hazard zone X. And zone AE. Or firm panel number one six zero one seven C zero seven five zero E with an effective date of November eighteenth, two thousand nine. Services that are available is an individual direct lake draw system. Men visual septic system is within Sagu Fire District. Hours provided this utilities and is within Lake Fonrae School District number eighty four. These are the standards for which uh. Need to be followed for variance, which is B C R C twelve dash two three four, um I'm not going to read them because I'm sure everyone's heard the. Third time now today almost. These are the two parcels that we were looking at. This afternoon. So. Conditions from the pie to the property that generally do not apply to other properties in the same zone vicinity. Which conditions are a result of lot size. Shape, topography, and other cir- circumstances over which that then has no control. Napkins respond is found in the staff report, so I'm just gonna go over uh the staff's response in this. So. First parcel that we're looking at is larger one and that's approximately uh point three nine acres or twenty five thousand nine hundred and seventy five square feet. Second parcel is approximately point zero three acres or roughly fourteen hundred square feet. Both parcels are currently zoned R ten. There are other parcels and lots within a half mile that are below the zoning minimum requirements for the rural district. The subject lots were created prior to the adoption of the current two thousand eight zoning map. Most parcels on the lakeside of Bottle Bay Road are below the zoning minimum requirements for parcel size. Shape of the parcel. RP fifty seven and zero one W three zero two five nine one A is roughly a rectangular shape. All. They rode intersects this parcel. Uh several parcels lots within a half mile are split by Bottle Bay Road that creates smaller portions on the north side of the road in this area. Smaller parcel is roughly square shape. So moving on to the topography of. These parcels, um they do have map slopes of zero to thirty percent or greater in grade. Uh approximately. Point three six acres or plus or minus ninety percent of the parcel is mapped at thirty percent or greater. Most of the map slopes are on the south side of the parcel split by Bottle Bay Road, northern portion of the parcel is mapped at zero to fifteen percent grade. Smaller parcel has map slopes of zero thirty percent rate approximately point zero two. Acres or sixty seven percent of this lot is mapped at thirty percent or greater, the remainder of the parcel is mapped at zero to fifteen percent grade. So other circumstances um on these parcels. Larger parcel is bisected by Bottle Bay Road, this portion of Bottle Bay Road. Is a plus or minus uh twenty foot prescriptive pave easement that is maintained by Bonner County. Greatest architectural projection on the current single family dwelling is approximately ten feet from Bottle Bay Road. The greatest architectural protection lakeside is about fifteen feet and then ordinary like modern mark. Approximately eight hundred and seventy five square feet, the existing structure is within the forty foot shoreline setback. This parcel is subject to an easement reported September second. Or September second nineteen fifty two that allows the United States government to submerge a portion of the property as described in this from number five one seven zero zero three. ADU on the smaller parcel is approximately seventeen feet from Bottle Bay Road. And is approximately eighteen feet from Lake Pontaray. Parcel is subject to an easement reported September second nineteen fifty two that allows United States government to submerge a portion of the property as described. Instrument five one seven zero zero three. So moving on to part B, cer- special circumstances. And conditions that don't result from the actions of the applicant. Once again, the applicant's response in staff or staff found that the single family dwelling in AD. ADU were both constructed. According to Bonner County Assessors' records on September second, oh sorry. Structured in nineteen forty four, according to the Bonner County Assessors' records, on September second. Uh nineteen fifty two, both parcels became subject to an easement that allows the United States government to submerge a portion of the properties. For instrument number five one seven zero zero three, napkins purchased the parcels in the current condition in nineteen ninety eight. The current nonconforming code B C R C twelve dash three four four A was passed December fifth, two thousand eight. This section of code does not allow for property owners to increase the bulk of nonconformity structures. However, Idaho statute six seven dash six five one six allows property owners to request variances. Well, this is out of state code, another ordinance provisions affected the size or shape of a structure or placement of a structure, plumbed lot. Or the size of the lots. So part C, granting of the variance is not in conflict with public interest in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Of the subject parcel or lot. Bonner County Flood Plane Manager both heard. Uh Per County G I S and the site plan both the single family dwelling in the shed, the accessory structure. And questioning the variance request are partially within special flood hazard. If this is. If if this proposal is approved, both the single family dwelling and shed will each require a flood development permit along with the B L P. One flood development permit per structure, multiple structures are not permitted on a single family or sorry, uh flood development permit application. I know Department of Fishing Day. This construction will not increase the impervious surface and does not encroach further into the waterfront setback distance so that it will have little effect on water quality. All current nearshore construction best management practices should adhere to. No other agency comments on this request that could affect the public health, safety, welfare, or be materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of these properties. The attached appendix A has a list of the agencies that rallied on this request, um the agencies that did respond was Idaho Department of Fireman and Quality, Idaho Department of Fish and Game. Uh the the agencies have replied with no comment was Idaho Transportation Department, Bonner County Historical Society, and Idaho Department of Transportation. This data, the staff report, no public comments were received on this request. That includes my presentations, I can stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Okay, at this time would the applicant like to make a presentation? And just make sure you state your name for the record.
Yeah, you sit here, absolutely.
I'm John Hyde. That.
We need to do just that, not over.
No, it'll pick you up.
I'm Dorrette Hyde. The owner of the house officially. But um. The house is actually in front. For my two son. And he'll be taking it over someday soon, I imagine. Um. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the house so you know why we want to do this. Um. As was stated. The house was built in nineteen forty four. So it's eighty one years old. That's all. I'm older than that, so I know how it feels. Inside, there are three bedrooms. And one tiny bath. That's a problem. There's approximately nine hundred and seventy square feet. In the interior of the house. There are three bedrooms. And as I've said, one small bathroom. No dining room. That is really frustrating, in summer we can eat outside on the porch. But when it rains or the weather's bad like last night. Out come the TV trays, that might be okay for us. But I see in my future great grandchildren. I don't think that would work. Recently, we spoke to the family that we bought the house from. That was in nineteen ninety eight. And we've had it twenty six years, which I can hardly believe. But they told us when they bought the cabin, there were no windows in it, which I find astonishing. Of course, there's windows in every room now. And the real focal point of the living room is a bay window. But unfortunately, I'm only one that can really see out of that window for this view because I'm short. My sons are, I would say, average height. And they either have to bend over or sit down to get the view. And it's really kind of an incredible view. There's no obstructions, you look across the bay. To sunny side, you can even see the train occasionally going on. Shore. And um. The water is clear where we are. And across in back of the road. Around on the other side of Bottle Bay Road, I should say. There's some huge trees with a real bus wearing us.
Well.
So that's how the heaven got its name. Another thing that makes it a special place is every summer you can count on at least two rainbows. Could photograph and charm. It's really a special place. We don't want to. Change it, we just want to make it better. And more livable.
That makes sense, thank you, I appreciate that, a little bit of extra insight. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
You can do it there, there, either one, just stay your name for the record.
My name is Tom Russell, I'm an architect with Bowden Architecture here at Sandpoint and uh. We designed the uh proposed new home for the Hyde family and. Immediately when we first saw this lot and the constraints, it was apparent that. It was pretty limited in what you could do and that we were going to have to work within the existing footprint. So. The home we designed, it's a it's a very creative design to stay within that same footprint. And the only option was to go up, so we added a second story, that's the bulk increase, that's the subject of the variance. And. Even with that extra space, we weren't quite able to accommodate all their needs for bedrooms and such for the extended family. Um and that's when they conceived of the idea that that additional parcel has. And I should probably clarify this in the staff report, it was called an A D U, but it's currently a shed. But it's a existing viable structure. And so the idea was conceived to make that a bunkhouse, it's. Not going to be a proper A D U, there'll be no kitchen facilities, it's just a bed and a small bathroom. And so that as well was designed to be within the existing footprint. The only modification there was it's currently a mono slope shed roof and um. We designed it with a gable double pitched roof just to give it a little little additional headroom. And um I should probably point out that. There is one small portion of it that exceeds the existing footprint, but I believe it falls under an exception in the code. And it's a a bit of a creative interpretation of that because the. It allows for a. Projection of a front porch that's unenclosed for eight feet in the front yard setback and that. Technically is the front yard setback because it's the setback from the right of way of Bottle Bay Road, so. The the building is oriented. Perpendicular to Bottle Bay Road, so the the small front and it's. Big enough for a landing for a front door, it's four by four feet, so it's. A fairly insignificant projection, but it's. I believe depending on how you interpret that exception, it it's it's shouldn't be subject to a variance because it meets the intent of the code. And. Yeah, we've designed the. It the upper level of the main house with no roof projections and it it basically takes up. Actually, we've reduced the overall footprint a little bit, it's inside some of what the existing structure projects. Um but it it respects all the existing encroachments and doesn't exceed them. Any other questions?
No, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody else for you guys? Okay. All right, I'm not going to go ahead and reread those rules of testimony again. So I'm just going to ask, is there anyone that has a written statement they'd like to enter into the record? Any supporting or public testimony in person or online? Anybody online?
Nobody online.
Okay. Any neutral public testimony in person? Any opposing public testimony in person? You want to show them, so I guess prepare. Anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak who would like to enter any comments into the record? All right, then you guys again don't have anything to rebut, yay. About close the hearing, I'm closing this hearing to uh public testimony for this file. And I, as with the other ones, I will be rendering my decision within five business days. So at this time, I am closing file V zero zero one five dash two five. And we are moving on to our last file, file zero V zero zero one zero dash two five, a variance street setback. Lot coverage and impervious surface. The applicant is requesting to reduce street setbacks of two to through two feet three inches from east Bottle Bay Road. And one foot six inches from Eureka Road where twenty five feet is required. Additionally, the applicant is requesting an increase for impervious surface. From thirty five to sixty five percent and an increase in lot coverage to forty five point two percent where thirty five percent is required. The zero point two three two acre property is on rural ten, the project is located on east Bottle Bay Road and Eureka Road in section thirty three township fifty seven north range one west Boise Meridian. The property site is within the service area of the Sagu. The property site is within the service area of the Segal District. Excuse me, Segal Fire District and the Bottle Bay Sewer and Water District, and I have no conflict or interest. This is all yours, Daniel.
Thank you, Harry Zander, Daniel Redd, planning staff, file V zero zero one five dash two. Those will do.
Yeah, that's what it's.
Okay. Sorry.
One zero, yeah.
Thank you. That's all.
I'd say the same thing.
So this is for a street setback, impervious surface and lot coverage request. The applicant is requesting to reduce street setbacks. A twenty-five foot setback is required. The applicant is requesting to be two feet, three inches from East Bottle Bay Road and one foot, six inches from Eureka Road. Additionally, the applicant is requesting an increase for impervious surface from the maximum allowed of thirty-five percent to sixty-five percent and an increase in the maximum lot coverage from thirty-five percent to forty-five point two percent. Project is on East Bottle Bay Road in Segal, generally located in section thirty-three, township fifty-seven, north one west. So some background on this particular lot, it is a residential lot that's planted, was approximately point two three acres. It is owned Recreation and Rural Five and has land use designation or resort community. East Bottle Bay Road is a privately owned, maintained road and Eureka Road is a Bonner County owned and privately maintained public right of way. So some environmental factors and services on this parcel. And if we look at the image on the right hand of the screen that's showing the floodplain in that white, blue and the yellow and the red are the slopes. So the site does contain map slopes between fifteen and thirty percent and above. Site does contain map wetlands. Site does contain bondage on Lake Pontaray. It is within special flood hazard AE and zone X. Per firm panel number one six zero one seven C zero nine seven five E with an effective date November eighteenth, two thousand nine. For the submitted site plan and the county GIS, the proposed development is within special flood hazard zone X and no further floodplain reviews required in this proposal. So an individual well is serving the water for this property. Sewage is provided by Bottle Bay Sewer and Water District. It's within the Segal Fire District. Utilities are provided by Vista Utilities and is within Lake Pontare, Lake Pontare School District number eighty-four. These are the various standards for Bonner County devised code. This is for twelve dash two three A, B, and C, which we've covered in previous files of Saturday. This is taking a look at the lot that we're discussing here today. I think it's noteworthy at this point, even though we can't see it here is that the zoning for the rural five is on that northeast side of the property here. So the conditions applied to the property that generally that don't apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which applicant has no control. So staff found that the lot size is approximately point zero three acres. Shape of the lot is mostly rectangular in shape and tapering off to a point on the east side. The lot is fragmented into three segments by two roads. The lot contains map slopes ranging between zero and thirty percent or greater grade. Other circumstances at present, there are two right of ways intersecting this lot, East Bottle Bay Road and Eureka Road. East Bottle Bay Road is a private road and privately maintained. Eureka Road is a public road, is privately maintained. These roads encumber this lot and four other lots in the subdivision. This condition has existed on these lots since the plat was recorded April nineteenth, nineteen fifty-seven. Editor instrument number six zero nine eight eight. Lot contains waterfront and is split between two zoning districts. This lot and two other lots in the subdivision are split zoned. The lot being split zoned does adversely affect the setback requirements for Bonner County devised code twelve dash four one one note eleven. Grants reduction of property setbacks. Sorry. Sorry. So BCRC twelve dash four eleven note eleven grants a reduced property setback line of five feet for lots parcels less than one acre. However, lot is subject to two street setbacks and that requirement is twenty-five feet. Special conditions and circumstances that do not result from the actions of the applicant. So staff found setbacks per BCRC twelve four one two, table four two, Bonner County first implemented setback standards due fifteenth nineteen seventy-seven through ordinance one one six, instrument one eight seven seven nine six. The adoption of this ordinance appears to be after the structure was built in nineteen fifty-nine, according to the Bonner County accessory records. Currently, the lot is subject to twenty-five foot street setbacks for BCRC twelve dash four one two, table four two. Due to this requirement and where two rows intersect this lot, this requirement of the code creates smaller building envelopes other than building envelope than other lots in the vicinity of this proposal. So discussing the lot coverage. Per BCRC twelve dash four one two, table four dash two, maximum lot coverage standard of thirty-five percent was adopted in nineteen eighty-seven under the ordinance number one seventy-nine, instrument number recording three four two one zero one. Above mentioned roads intersecting this lot counts towards the maximum lot coverage of thirty-five percent. BCRC twelve dash four one two, table four dash two, does not have an exception to this standard. Only option landlords have to increase this percentage is to apply for a variance from this standard. So sticking with B still, special circumstances, there's impervious service standards per Bonner County devised code twelve dash seven. East Bottle Bay Road and Eureka Road both have paved right of ways that intersect this lot. Since the paving of both roads, unintended consequence of this action created additional impervious surface on this lot. This is also true of other lots on East Bottle Bay Road and several other lots on Eureka Road. BCRC twelve dash seven one three, impervious service standards near the water require that all previous surface within two hundred feet of the shoreline be calculated towards thirty-five percent coverage. This lot is entirely within two hundred feet of the shoreline requirements. BCRC twelve dash seven one three A states impervious service exemptions do not allow for a reduction to the standard of a public right of way that intersects lots or parcels in Bonner County. So C, the granting of variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it might be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare and materially interest to properties or improvements in vicinity of the subject parcel lot. So Bonner County Floodplain Manager stated the floodplain development permitted required prior to any human cost change to the property. East Bottle Bay Road is a private road and privately made and privately maintained. Eureka Road is a publicly owned and privately maintained. Bonner County Road and Bridge Department, through an agency comment, expressed concerns about the post-street street setback request to Eureka Road. This utilities did not provide a comment on any effect this request on their ability to delivery of service, to deliver service. No other agencies submitted comments on this request that could affect public health, safety, or welfare or the materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity of these properties. So Roden Bridge's full comment is attached to the file Saturday. These are the following agencies that replied with the comment, Bonner County Historical Society, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Bonner County Road and Bridge, Idaho Department of Fish and Game. Or one agency replied with no comment and that was Idaho Transportation Department. As at this date, a public comment was received on this request. Yeah, it was my presentation. I can stand for any questions.
You're happy. Thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to make a presentation at this time?
Is it possible to see the public comment? I don't call that being in the staff report to me.
It should have been sent to unless we came in after the staff reports.
Okay, yeah, I don't recall seeing it in the staff report.
Absolutely.
If, if we. Process if you want to, we can look at it at any time.
Okay, you can go ahead and, and you know, present what you guys like to, you can use either spot.
Pretty loud.
Just state your name for the record. That's all I.
My name is William Wright. And I don't know, I, all the documentation I've said before, do you have that with you? Like the photographs of the neighbors and all that kind of things?
It should have all been entered into the record for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good or two.
Yeah. Um, but we can clarify that with them to make sure that they just put it all on. What they do is they load it onto a Google Drive for me and that's where I do it.
You said for.
Yeah.
Project.
Yeah.
Okay, the only thing that I've got is that maybe I'll need to submit this to you or.
Sure, that works fine. Yeah, if you just submit it, then you don't have to read through the whole thing. Okay, and then I just need this stamped receipt. So if you could actually just hand it to
Oh.
Daniel. Yeah, because they have to stamp receipt and have it stamped received. And then we'll put it into the record. All these processes that have to be done.
Followed it. You already wrapped. Okay. I, I guess as far as what I was gonna say was that, you know, I put everything in the letters because I don't speak very well in public, but.
It's just that I'm such a teeny lot and I don't have the ability to, to try to rein it in or do other things. It's like everybody else I see on the whole East Bottle Bay has got these great big lots all the way back and it's like about a kill to have that, but I don't. So I'm trying to do the best I possibly can here and try to be, you know, respectful of my neighbors' properties and things like that. And everybody I talked to on the bay is all like, Bill, you want us to come in and, you know, and testify for you because everybody's, I mean, love to see this happen. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to like that?
My name is Tom Russell. I'm an architect that worked with Bill on the design of the post home. And I'd like to speak to a few things. Somebody already touched on. Currently existing on the site are two separate buildings and we initially thought we could do this under the, the grandfather bulk provisions, but it became apparent that it was just going to be too difficult to quantify what's there as opposed to what is being proposed. So rather than do that, we just thought it was better to apply for a straight variance from the various requirements that Daniel outlined. To speak to the first one, the setbacks of if you go down East Bottle Bay Road, I don't know the exact number, but I'm guessing you could count on two fingers the number of houses that are actually meeting the setback. It's almost every house is right on the road. And this one, we've kept it back as far as we possibly could and Mr. Wright actually owns fairly good sized piece of property on the other side of the road between East Bottle Bay Road and the lake. That's, it's just a grass and lawn now, so there's plenty of space there to install any kind of stormwater infiltration or treatment facilities that they might be necessary once they do the calculations for the impervious. And also proposed with the home and included in those impervious calculations are some hardscape areas, a patio in the front and a access sidewalk down the side of the home. So those, if the impervious surface becomes a sticking point, those could be done with pervious favors or some other surface that would have reduced the impervious area, but still give him the proposed patio spaces and sidewalk that he would prefer. And also included in those calculations, I believe, are the areas of the two roads that cross his property, which shouldn't be counted against the impervious that he's creating because they're already there. Also, speaking to this setback on Eureka Road, is it possible to pull up the county GIS parcel boundaries or do you want the weather or the GIS?
Well, okay, we can, we can come back to this, but give me a moment.
Yeah, the point I'm trying to make is Eureka Road is somewhat unique, not from other places in the county because there, in my experience, there's a lot of them, but there is no black and white legally defensible right of way across that property. If you go up Eureka Road another half mile, all the properties that if bisects have designated right of ways that show on the property boundaries, but in the county GIS property designation on the plat map and also on the survey we had done, there's no established right of way. It's a, I don't even know legally how it's defined, but it's just a grandfather use. And I believe Mr. Wright's neighbor, as he's a, he used to be a, a property attorney. He's researched it heavily and there really isn't a rock solid right to the public to use that. It's, it's an established use, but it's, I don't know that it's legally defensible. And I had a conversation with Matt Mulder, the county's engineer, who's seems very well educated on it. He educated me and what he said is Idaho law has some provisions giving whoever adopts based on the number of years it's been used as a public access. You may know more about this than I do. I don't very well understand property law, but basically, he said it's not well defined and it would have to be heavily researched by him and it may be disputable. So we've made every attempt to make the situation better. The current building, as the staff report indicated and, and Bill has in his letter, the current building that's closest to Eureka Road actually overhangs into the road and the eve line is about where you hit your head on it if you walked by it. And we're proposing a two, a two-story structure that would be well above that and also further setback from the road than what exists. By right, he could build within the footprint that's already there and still be approaching on Eureka Road and still be over his property, his side yard setbacks and over next to the neighbor's property. So we've tried to respect the neighbor's property rights and, and stay within the side yard setbacks and keep it as reasonable as possible and maximize the setbacks from the roads that are there. But again, the constraints are, are pretty strict and it would be difficult to build a viable home in the area that he has if all the setbacks were adhered to.
Yeah.
So yeah, can we zoom in on that parcel, Daniel?
Absolutely.
So you can see there, there's no right of way shown.
Do you need copies of that?
No, it's just, it's just, all, all the houses getting out to my house. It's like. You're all.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
There's no right of way shown on that property boundary, but if you go up Eureka Road another quarter or half a mile, all the parcels that are bicycling by that road have an established right of way. So this falls into a gray area that I think it's somewhat disputable exactly how that right of way. How that right of way would apply. Yeah, if you go up a bit, Daniel, up Eureka Road, you can see there's. Even further.
We know it.
Right there. Right where Beltane Road starts, you can see that there's now a established right of way for Eureka Road, so. The fact that that doesn't exist over Mr. Wright's parcel. In my mind brings into question exactly what's enforceable there.
Uh what had happened with, it was something about my neighbor Bill Heard. And we had culvert go out on the road down near where it intersects with Segal or Bottle Bay Road. And he were. Who owns this, you know, who, you know, because we couldn't do anything about tearing it up and doing the. Uh the culprit underneath East Bottle Bay Road. And that's when I just asked the night, and I said something about this too, he says, it's not a county. So he is, and he, like you say, he spent so much time looking at it, I I don't know about. Whatever they said, it's not accounted for.
So, yeah, regardless of the designation, it seems like there's some latitude in in how that's defined and. I feel like the fact that we're approving on the situation that's there should hopefully be taken into account.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and can we see that letter again?
Yeah, I'd love to know. The parcel print that out, but. Not from there, we don't kind of, well, and you send it to me. Oh, happens to.
If you guys want, you can take a minute to read that, and I will give you.
Yeah, you have a chance to, but.
Yeah, you'll, I'll give you the chance to rebut. What I'll do is I'll go ahead and you guys can read that and I'll just go ahead and see if there's anyone else that wants to present any comments. While you guys are taking a look at that and then. If we have others besides that, then you'll have a chance to rebut all of it. Okay, so again, not going to reread the rules of testimony, um but.
Just so you know, this comment was also addressed to another variance. So the people that sent this in addressed this variance as well as uh administrative variance.
Okay.
So the the comment seems to be mashed together between the two, I'm not sure what the plus was, or be a seventeen though.
Okay.
Just to be aware.
Thank you.
Seems like a general grievance with the process more than the.
Okay, so is there anyone online?
There's not.
Uh, okay, and there's obviously no one else in the room, so. Okay, um yeah, so let's get you guys that minutes, take a look at that. Like you want to do any kind of rebuttal to that. There's nothing else going on, so there's nothing else to rebut.
Everyone's done reading us. Jackie, did you have this in your?
I was gonna look while they asked a good question. Remember seeing this, honestly, but.
It's not a little drop of ink after the minutes.
Oh, yes, Mr. Moss, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh yes, can you please move them?
Right, I do remember seeing this, I do remember thinking, I needed to ask you. That's the other thing they're talking about.
Not my file, so I did.
Yeah, so who knows? No doubt. Second, you guys?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything you would like to rebut to what you read up there?
Uh but he's talking about block view. But he's talking about the block view, that would be the other people that are building. Kind of in front of, but it's kind of in front of, it's. I I don't have anything wondering to say about this guy, he is notorious for building out onto. Other people's lots on both sides. And the last guy, the guy that I bought the land from, seeing that letter. Was nice, I said, I I just need a little more land, so I'm not approaching any of your properties, oh, well, go figure out something. So I wanted to buy a piece of land around, so I'm, if I think back, I'd love to do that on all the sides, but anyway. He was like, he had so many problems with this guy. Just, oh, I'll build this brick wall out here, you know, and I'll build my parking structure out here, so it's like. I just, I figured if anybody had anything negative to say, it'd be Rob Moss, so sorry about that, this.
Yep, that's, it actually does help me getting different perspectives.
Yeah, it's just kind of, okay.
No apologies. All right. Okay. Well, did you guys, you didn't want to add anything else, you're all good? Okay. All right, then I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony and as with the other files, I'm going to render my decision within the five business days. So at this time, I'm going to close file B zero zero one zero dash two five. Okay. All right. Are there any schedule reminders, updates or announcements?
I ask a general question. Sure, I I'm sorry, I should have asked this during the previous hearing, but. That was asking for variance for two separate structures.
The comment letter?
No, I'm, I'm, this is the previous area, so I'm sorry, I I totally forgot to mention this, but. If there's one small issue with one of the. Structures in that variance, is it possible to get them considered separately so that? We were encouraged to apply for them together, but I could see where if you say. This little tiny front porch doesn't work, then the whole thing is negated, is it possible that?
So she can um, and Jackie's um. Her view, she can take any part of the variance in or out. So if she has a problem with one issue, she can say, I don't approve the variance for this portion, but I do approve it for this.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Um, schedule reminders, uh you have a hearing, I believe it's August fifth. Um. Or maybe August sixth, I don't.
Yes.
Yep, August sixth. Um I think we only have one file scheduled for that day, so um it should be a quick day. Um, other than that, I don't think we've got any other announcements, um. The board and planning commissioner are working through the land use component and the um. Implementation component, the um comprehensive plan, um so those. Uh policies might change a little bit uh when you're doing your reviews on conditional use permits and. Um, any files that may require a review of those. Um, other than that. Um. The planning commission is working through the use tables and zoning designations right now, um just in a, in a draft form, so. We'll see what kind of changes uh they make, it'll kind of depend on the land use component and how that all that shakes out, um and what. Changes they'll recommend to the board for uh the different uses in the different zones, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else for you.
Okay. Good. All righty then, then we are adjourned until the next planning.